The first item up is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to the next item, there are no members of the public here for making comments this morning. The next item up is the focus on student achievement. Dr. Postaway.
Thanks. We're turning it over to Buffy Roberts first, who, or Terry, do you want to start?
And then toss off to Buffy. We have both the Hanover research report on the program evaluation, as well as the recommendations and some report on work that's going forward for next year. Terry?
Great. Board Chair, members of the board, Dr. Postway. It's my privilege and pleasure to be here this afternoon to talk a little bit about the Early Childhood Project, which is a project team that's been working together since September the 30th to put together some proposals for transforming early childhood in Charleston County School District. And the mission and purpose of our task force is really that early childhood, we know, is a critical lever in closing the achievement gap and the opportunity gap for students and giving them a firm foundation so that they can be successful moving forward in school and be prepared for a high-quality life. And the purpose of our project really was threefold, is to create a comprehensive plan, to redesign our early childhood program, looking at overall program recommendations, presenting some options for universal 4K, and looking into hiring of certified teachers for preschool classes. Those three bullets there were really voted on by the board on September the 23rd as through the mission critical actions. And so our team started by looking at research, and part of the research that we looked at came from our Hanover Research Group. And Mrs. Roberts, Buffy Roberts, is going to kind of go over that research with you right now, because it was one of the foundational pieces of our project team's work.
Thanks so much.
Okay, good afternoon. Hanover Research is a reputable research firm employing diverse researchers specializing in such areas as leadership, academics, college and career readiness, instructional environments, family engagement, talent management, and operational improvement. CCSD partnered with Hanover in order to complete an external evaluation of our current early childhood program. The purpose of the study was to identify the impact of 4K programming on later elementary school outcomes, such as achievement indicators like MAP and SE Ready, and school engagement indicators like attendance and discipline. In the study, Hanover examined students who attended 4K in 2014-15 and 2015-16. They compared the students who attended 4K during those years with students who did not attend 4K. Outcomes were examined in two groups. All students were grouped according to their 4K participation or nonparticipation, and then the subgroup of low SES or socio-economic status or high poverty were pulled out and grouped according to their 4K participation or nonparticipation. Because 4K programs generally serve high-poverty students, looking at the outcomes of 4K participants and nonparticipants in this way provides a clearer picture of the effectiveness of our 4K programs. Additionally, having the all-students comparison helps us see impacts on opportunity gaps. So based on the key findings from the study, overall, 4K program participants from low SES families in traditional child development and Montessori settings achieved higher academic and behavioral outcomes in grades two and three compared to non-participating students from low SES families on average. When looking at achievement results on MAP and SE Ready, low SES 4K traditional and Montessori participants outperformed nonparticipants. When looking at student engagement indicators, attendance is positive for our 4K participants in general. Low SES 4K traditional and Montessori participants experienced higher attendance rates than our nonparticipants. In disciplinary or behavioral outcomes, we do see some mixed results. Low SES 4K traditional and Head Start participants experienced slightly more disciplinary incidents than nonparticipants in grade two. Low SES 4K traditional, Montessori, PIC, and Head Start all had fewer disciplinary incidents than nonparticipants in grade three, however. Montessori students in this low SES subgroup experienced half the disciplinary incidents than that of their 4K nonparticipants. In summary, based on these outcomes overall, low SES students who participate in 4K programs do benefit from their participation. Based on another key finding of the study, participation in current 4K program was not shown to close the opportunity and achievement gap between the low SES students and students from more socio-economically advantaged families. However, results again suggest that low SES students still benefit from participation in the current program. For achievement results, the study revealed that nonparticipants and Montessori 4K participants outperformed other 4K participants on map reading and map math in grade two. And nonparticipants outperformed 4K participants overall on map reading and map math, as well as SE Ready in grade three. For student engagement, Montessori 4K and preschool intervention participants had higher attendance rates than nonparticipants and traditional 4K participants overall. However, nonparticipants experienced fewer disciplinary incidents than 4K participants overall. Ultimately, the study confirms what we know to be true. 4K program participation as it is does not close the opportunity gap between our low SES students and students from more socio-economically advantaged families, but it does benefit and positively impact low socio-economic students and their achievement and behavioral This study also provided three overall recommendations. Number one, to continue to prioritize access to 4K program for low SES students. Number two, further investigate the performance gaps between 4K program participants and nonparticipants. And number three, consider providing additional support for Head Start students. The Early Childhood Task Force has responded to these recommendations, and they're very generally described on the screen as you see here. Action Center on Expanding Early Childhood Program Access, Establishing an Early Childhood Education Center, Increasing the Social, Emotional, Learning, and Mental Health Supports for All Programs, Enhancing Family Engagement Opportunities, Centralizing and Streamlining Identification and Enrollment Process for Early Childhood Services, which will also help with progress monitoring data and learner outcomes, Recruiting Certified Teachers for Head Start, and Enhancing and Supporting Curriculum Implementation for Head Start. I'll now turn it over to the Early Childhood Task Force, so that you are able to hear more details and explanations about recommended actions based on the key findings of this study, as well as the work that's currently being done around early childhood education and CCSD.
All right. So after that, all that information from Hanover, our task force was charged with what are we going to do, and what are we going to do next, and what are we going to lay our foundation on? Well, our task force is using the National Association for the Education of Young Children, or NACY, N-A-E-Y-C, as a driver of change. For more than 30 years, NACY is the national gold star of standards for early childhood. By meeting these national standards of quality, we will be able to ensure that we're providing high-quality early childhood programs and experiences for our students. So the accreditation system that NACY has is very rigorous, and a critical component moving forward for our early childhood is that our district will be seeking accreditation by NACY in the future. We'll be starting next year, and it is a multi-year process to become NACY accredited. It is quite rigorous, and we do not expect, they do not, NACY does not expect someone to get accredited in a year, or maybe even two, but it is something that we're going to take on as using it as part of our driver of change. And I'll be referring to NACY a couple more times in the presentation. Our task force also really felt very strongly about creating our theory of action. What do we believe in? And if we believe what we believe in, then what should we do? And then if we do those things that we believe in, what's going to, what's that going to lead to? What's that going to be our outcome? And basically, our CCSD does believe that high-quality early learning and parental engagement provides a firm foundation for overall student achievement. And if we really believe that, then we need to provide all of those things that are in that middle column. Learning standards that are high and rigorous, data-driven assessments, quality curriculum, holistic supports, and the list goes on. Certified educators, family engagement opportunities, community partners, all of those things CCSD really needs to provide if we do believe in the importance of early childhood. And we believe that if we do that, that we will end up with substantially increased achievement levels for our students coming out of our early childhood programs, and ultimately, we will have an exemplar model for future early childhood programs in CCSD. You can refer back to that theory of action throughout, as you read this presentation over again. I'm sure you will. These are the NACY standards again. There are 10 of them. They are hyperlinked with, which means that on your, in your computer, if you want to click on any one of those standards, it will give you what that standard means. But even more importantly, what you would look for, what NACY looks for, what we should look for as we're going into early childhood classrooms. For example, in relationships, it gives you the explanation of what relationships are, and if you go into classrooms, what should you see? You should see teachers interacting with students in a certain way. You should see the teacher assistant having a small group of students. You should see students interacting with each other in a certain way. And each one of those standards are very clearly defined in NACY of what the expectations are. The task force really looked at all of these standards, and every one of the pieces that we put together are linked back to standards, and I'll point that out in just a minute as we move on. The major components of our task force work, and we, like I said, we started working, you as a board approved, told us to move forward and look into early childhood, start creating an improved early childhood plan on September the 23rd, and the task force started meeting on September 30th, and we have met every week since then. One of the first things we did is we began the research and beginning the process of NACY accreditation by talking with the folks at NACY and doing some more research. Also, there's been, we've, the board has approved the establishment of the Mary Ford Early Childhood and Family Engagement Center at Mary Ford. That's to open in August of 2020, so that we've been doing work in that area, and that addresses every one of the 10 NACY standards. You also asked for, and we created a centralized plan for application and screening for CD students that will be done centrally, and that, the outcome for that is that we're going to be able to identify students and screen them earlier and have the parents know about their acceptance much earlier than in the past, and that's moving forward for 2021. You'll see the NACY standard there of standard four, that meets NACY standard four. Another component of this plan was to provide some information on universal 4K, possible implementation, possible suggestions for that. We also spent a great deal of time looking at curriculum for early childhood, and that meets up with the standard number two, which is the curriculum standard in NACY. We spent a lot of time looking at best practices, looking at early childhood programs throughout the United States that were really doing well. Actually, visited one in Nashville, and we said, what are you using? What curriculum are you using? What do you see, what are you getting the best results with? And we're making some recommendations in that area. But it's not just curriculum, because you have to have professional development and supports for your teachers and your teacher assistants, and I would say also for your administrators. We have to provide ongoing and supportive professional development in order for anything to be successful. We're going to be using assessments to guide instructional decisions. That's another key part of NACY standards, along with collaborating, communication of, and a strategic marketing plan. And we also need to determine our early Head Start and Head Start grant application needs. That's also one part of our task force. So those are the things that we have been working on and will continue to work on in the area of early childhood. I'm going to talk next a little bit about Mary Ford Early Childhood Center, Early Childhood and Family Engagement Center. If you see the, and that's the symbol in the middle, in the gold, and the hexagons around the gold center are some of the components that, I'm going to highlight some of the components of the Mary Ford Early Childhood and Family Engagement Center as they are being developed now. Again, just underlined again, the standard of excellence, that we're using the NACY expectations as a benchmark to make sure that we align all of our decisions for the Mary Ford Center, that they're aligned to NACY standards and expectations and levels of rigor. We'll be pursuing the NACY accreditation for our center beginning next year. That's a collection year and a learning year and completing documentation year. There's no expectation, in fact, NACY does not allow you to become accredited in one year, so it would be the second year that we would actually do the application. But we want to, once we earn the NACY accreditation at Mary Ford Early Childhood and Family Engagement Center, we want it to, that to also be spread through other, through other programs, early childhood programs in the district, and that we would continue to keep that accreditation post our initial accreditation and onward, moving forward throughout all the renewal processes. Mary Ford is definitely going to be a place to learn and grow, and the current Mary Ford site is, will be renovated this summer to accommodate six four-year-old classrooms and six five-year-old classrooms. We're going to be updating our classroom furniture. The front office area of the building will be renovated to provide a secure and welcoming area for parents, students, and faculty. There'll be a new outdoor area at Mary Ford. They have one beautiful playground now, but we'll be adding a second one that's specifically for early childhood. There'll be spaces for related arts, support services, parent engagement rooms, and the media center and the cafeteria will be housed with furniture that will be appropriate for little folks. So we're going to have, it'll be a really, it'll be a center that's really centered on young people, for them, for young folks to learn and grow. Our curriculum at Mary Ford, the foundation and theoretical base, of course, is going to be our South Carolina Early Learning Standards. We're going to be using the pyramid model for social-emotional supports. Our core curriculum is going to be the Creative Curriculum Version 6 Deluxe, Second Steps, and we're going to have curriculum supports. So the curriculum will be very engaging, very rigorous, very appropriate for early childhood, and we'll be measuring our success in this area by doing fidelity checks and quality data assessments, progress monitoring, and really making sure that the curriculum, the rigorous curriculum that we're putting into place is being implemented correctly and appropriately. And now I want to turn over to this next two slides to Kim Foxworth. Kim Foxworth has served on our team since September, I think probably came in, maybe October 1st. She's our partner with Trident United Way and has been an invaluable member of this team, offering a lot of support. So I'm going to pass it on to Kim.
Good afternoon. NACY accreditation standards not only require rigorous curriculum and high-quality teaching and learning, but they also call for comprehensive supports for children and family. This is what is planned for, which is so exciting for Mary Ford. This slide highlights some comprehensive supports that are being considered for Mary Ford. These supports will build on the existing resources, partnerships, and community and parent involvement that already are in place. It will build on the programs and opportunities that the Charleston Promise Neighborhood and other community organizations and community groups have had and continue to implement at Mary Ford. This center will go above and beyond. The project team examined NACY's best practices for family engagement and what other early childhood centers across the country are doing, such as the Ross Early Learning Center in Nashville that we already referenced. Our research led us to organize the opportunities for families into four categories. Enrichment, activities for students and families, parent and caregiver education, leadership, and family engagement. In addition, these opportunities, in addition to these opportunities, we will continue to have the data conferences that families are coming to expect, and working on considering home visits and a daily home reading program supported by sending home books. This slide highlights the possibilities of what could be offered for families. There's also a link at the bottom to a spreadsheet which documents the current programming activities funded and offered by Charleston Promise Neighborhood and other resources, as well as identifying the additional potential offerings under each of the categories I listed. It's very exhaustive. The project team wants to emphasize that the final offerings will be determined and identified by the families, staff, community, which is a reason why you see words such as potential, possibility, because we won't determine, we're going to determine them with the community and the families and the staff. This will begin on January 28th, when the families from Shakora and Mary Ford will come together to review plans, provide input, and guide the continued direction of the Mary Ford program. A full slate, because there's a lot of them, particularly if you look at the offerings, a full slate of offerings may take one to two years to develop. Continuous improvement and evaluation will be integrated into the center's ongoing review process. It will be expected and supported, the intentional collaboration between Mary Ford and Shakora. There will be intentional collaboration to ensure there's coordinated efforts and involvement for both school communities. Now I'm going to turn it over to Christine.
Yeah, but I'm going to, right before Christine, I'm just going to set up the next part. That's the end of the information about Mary Ford, but the project team also worked on some other initiatives, one of those being the centralized enrollment and screening that you're going to hear about as soon as I finish this slide. Universal 4K, district-wide professional development, and district-wide curriculum and support. So Christine Zamboki, our Director in Early Childhood, is going to talk about the centralized enrollment and screening, and she's really excited because we're getting ready to kick that off right pretty soon. Christine?
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Christine Zamboki. I've had the honor to work on the Early Childhood Task Force. We have four additional initiatives that support the early childhood process in CCSD. You can see those on your screen, centralized enrollment and screening, universal 4K, district-wide PD, and district-wide curriculum support. Beginning January 28th, we have created, well, beginning, we've created a subcommittee to examine and redesign the enrollment, application, and screening process for the growing Charleston County School District community. Beginning January 28th, the Early Learning Department will support CCSD parents and students through an online application timeline for all early learning student options, including Montessori, Head Start, and pre-K child development. The district will provide four ways for parents to apply. There will be a paper intake form at each school. They can attend a community event in each zone. They can download and print intake forms, or complete an online intake form. Redesigning the enrollment, application, and screening process will provide several benefits. Centralized application protects teachers' time, keeping teachers in the classroom focused on instruction. Pre-K students can also attend school longer with centralizing this process. Paper and online intake forms will also provide a smooth transition to universal pre-K. As we look at our application data, we continue to receive more applications each year. As Charleston County community, we continue to grow, and we're seeing more interest in our pre-K programming to assist with the growing demand. This is great news, and now we have a systematic way to support teachers and parents.
And now, universal 4K. This is going to take some planning, and in determining where to start, this committee did some, did a lot of research. We used multiple data points to first determine school need. Is there a need by looking at test results in the kindergarten area, demand in the community, et cetera? What, we used several different data points and determined schools that had the greatest need for 4K. We examined the number of the current kindergarten enrollment, looked at trends, talked to our folks that do enrollment projections, and kind of, we needed to have a way to project the number of additional classes that we would need if we were to move towards universal 4K, offering four-year-old kindergarten to every child that is four by September 1st. And then we moved from that to examine the ability of our current facilities to support those additional classrooms. If we were to have an influx of a great deal of money, and you said to us, go put four-year-old programs everywhere, could we do it at the space that we have? And I think you probably already all know the answer, we could not do it exactly right now in the space that we have. But we wanted to explore a universal 4K phase-in. And so the next slide kind of gives you one option for that. This is a graph of schools that have a high need for four-year-old programming, and they have some space available, and you'll see those schools listed on the bottom. I'll just take the first one as an example. Dunston Elementary, they currently have three early, they currently have three four-year-old programs in their school. They have, they have space to add another one if we, we believe that if they added that fourth class, that we would capture everyone that's four in their, in their enrollment zone. Ellington, right now, has two four-year-old programs, and they currently do not have a waiting list, and we believe we're capturing those students in the enrollment zone, so we really are providing universal 4K for those students. So if you look across, you'll see many of those have just blue, and there are four additional classrooms. So we could potentially, if you, if the board was interested in doing, with an addition of four additional classrooms, we could have, start down the road for universal 4K with those high-need schools and space. Now, I would imagine in your, right now, you're probably asking, well, what about those schools that have high needs and no space? Do we have any of those? We do. We have schools that have high needs, but they don't have the space. For example, AC Cochran has four early childhood four-year-old classrooms. In order to capture everyone in their attendance zone that's four, we estimate that we would need three additional classrooms, for a total of seven, and there is no space. James Allen Elementary would need two more, and there is no space. Ladson, we all know the growth at Ladson, and they would need many more. I think it's five, I can't read my graph from here, but it's four or five classrooms they would need additional. But that's, that is good information to have as we plan building programs and do some other things. Those are, those are the places that need more space for four-year-old programs, but right now, we don't have the space. And now we're going to talk a little bit about professional development, and that's, Michelle Ingus Watson's going to talk about that.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. As you know, our well-placed plan needs preparation and training and professional development that's ongoing. So in order to provide a rigorous and meaningful child, early childhood program with fidelity, we would need to follow, as in NACY Standard 6, staff competencies, preparation, and support within our district. We must have a well-planned framework to implement our professional development in order to support the early childhood program, and not just the program, but our staff, meaning teachers, teacher assistants, instructional coaches, support staff, parent educators, mental health workers, administrators, and also our community partners, because we want them to be on the same page as well. So a PD calendar is being developed to include ongoing specific training for curriculum implementation, assessments, and DSS requirements, because we do have our early Head Start, Head Start program housed in some of these programs as well, in some of these locations as well. So, as you can see, this is some of the outline of the professional development that we would be looking at as we start to move forward.
And just to wrap up, I wanted to let you know that this project team was multifaceted. It reached across departments from human resources, through our curriculum, learning services. We had, we had members on the project team from finance. We had retired educators, community partners, teachers, and retired teacher. So it was, it was a multifaceted team. Those are the members of the folks that have contributed to that, and if there are members of the team that are in the room, if they would stand just to be recognized, because they put in a lot of hard work. You are a very talented team. And now, if you have any questions, or I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Going around, we'll start over.
Reverend Matt?
I have a couple of questions. The first one being, I want to touch on the high needs and the space first, well, the high needs without space with the universal 4K. So, obviously, that, that means that there is no room there in a particular school to construct classroom spaces. So, so I guess my question then becomes, how are, what, how will we capture these students? Because that is the goal, right? To reach these students early on so that they can be better prepared when they get to kindergarten. So, so what are we doing, or what can we do to kind of capture those students?
That's a great question, and abs, absence of, absent of space to actually put another classroom in, I don't know that we have an awful lot that we can do. If there's a school nearby that has space, and we've done this before, we tried, we try to get the students into a school that's nearby with space. Unfortunately, you'll probably see up there Cochran, Ladson, they're all kind of up in that north, those in the north part of, of our district, and there's not space. I mean, I guess we could, we could potentially look at whether mobile classrooms is a possibility. I know there's no space on the Ladson campus to even add a mobile.
Right.
So we're, we're in a little bit of a predicament. I know that the board does have some plans into do some school combining and making some other early childhood centers in, in places, and that's an answer, but it's not an immediate answer. So I don't know that there's an immediate answer that I have.
Yeah, so, so you, you pretty much addressed what my next question is going to be. Is it possible to put mobile trailers, or can we house these 4K in mobile trailers?
Yeah, as long as that we can house four-year-old programs in mobile, mobile trailers with, they have to meet certain specifications, but we have, we were able to do that. I would have to defer to our folks that do that, or Mr. Barrowey, et cetera.
And I say that because that's a high number of, of kids that we're not capturing.
Correct.
And, but then, these will be students that will be coming into our schools, and not being rated all, and that's what we're trying to get to, right? We're trying to capture them early on, so it seems as though that we have to find a way of capturing these students early on, even though we're, we're moving in other capacity where there are space, but, but, but we can't leave out this piece, and or else we won't be doing fidelity across the board, because these kids are still not being, needs are still not being met.
And I think that's one of the reasons that the task force wanted to bring that information to the board, just to highlight that there are areas that have a great deal of students and the high number of students that we, that aren't in our four-year-old programs.
Okay, continuing around, Ms. Coates?
One?
Can I get one more?
Yes.
My time is up yet.
Time is up.
My time is up?
All right, go ahead.
Okay, Mark, go ahead.
Oh, no, thank you.
I'll be pressed to do it in the timeframe. Three, three quick questions, and they should be yes, no's. In the four-year-old, the 4K study that we did to show whether we were making progress for those that were exposed to it and those that weren't, are those certified teachers that are teaching those classrooms today versus what we're talking about in the future, which is making sure we have certified teachers in all of it?
Yes, they, they are. The, the study was conducted looking back in years past, but my understanding is that they would be.
Yeah, our four-year-old, our CD four-year-old, all are certified teachers. Where we're, where we don't have certified teachers, and it's in our three-year-old programs.
Next question, do we know the capital and operating budget implications of any of this yet?
Not yet.
Okay. And then the last one, you've shown high-need schools with space, high-need schools without space, what about the rest of the schools? Because there's high-need students in those schools.
Yes, no, we have not completed that study yet.
Okay, thank you.
Reverend Gray?
Sorry.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Ms. Darby?
Nope.
Reverend Collins?
Is, is it the four-year-olds all certified, have all certified teachers?
Yes, sir.
Now, how many, how many teachers are in one class, or is that a teacher and assistant, or what's in a, what's in a classroom? How many teachers in one classroom?
One teacher, one assistant, 20 students, max.
All right, and does the assistant have any kind of special training?
They have some professional development that probably needs to be increased as we move forward in, in our plans, yes.
Now, how much, how much do we pay the assistant teachers in, in 4K roughly?
I, I really would not know the answer to that. I'd have to ask Mr. Brigham.
Would anybody be able to? Just give me a ballpark.
Mr. Brigham might know.
All right, so get that one before we leave, please. How, how would NACI impact the classroom?
How would it impact the classroom? Well, one, one way is that it, it sets the foundation of expectations and things to look for. It is a, over, it's been around for more than 30 years, it's considered the gold standard that we look for, and if we can achieve to, if NACI can, can come into our schools and into our classrooms, and really take a look at our, what we're doing, and give us the approval, and we earn the accreditation, then we really are providing for our students some of the very best early childhood experiences that we can offer.
That's if, okay. One more cannot be done. On page two, in all students, it says, 4K non-participants achieved.
On actual report, Terry, not the PowerPoint. Oh, on actual report.
4K non-participants achieved the highest scores among all student groups represented in the grade three cohort in the 2018, 2019. So if I'm reading this right, you tell me that the kids that didn't participate, they're better in grade three after going into, after going into 4K?
Let me explain the, the two groups. One of the things that, that this study did is it looked at two comparison groups. Our low SES students.
Yes, I saw that.
And then all students overall. So the, the students who are served in our 4K programs are students who are low SES.
Right.
So when you look at those, when you look at the effectiveness of that program, in order to sort of compare apples to apples, you want to look at students who are in that subgroup, in the low SES subgroup, who are participants in 4K and who are not participants in 4K. The all-students category does not do that. It just looks at all students overall.
So they could have had private 4K as well?
Correct.
Okay.
That's right.
That was, yeah, that was my question.
That would be, that would make it for some of the students, but you really, when you look at it, from the surface, the implication is that, well, if you go and if you went into 4K program, low income, they actually didn't perform worse. When you went on the surface, that's what it says.
Well, I think it probably more, it, it more speaks to the fact that although a, an early childhood program can, can benefit students who are in the low SES subgroup, it may not, and according to national research, it may not, and will most likely not, close it completely. And so that's, that's why it's really difficult to look at that all-students group, to determine whether your, your 4K program is actually as effective, if that explains it.
I stopped for a second time, but I read two or three points that really got my attention of, of the kids that are in, not doing very well by second or third grade. So, so, and that's, this is just Charleston County, right?
This particular study is focused on Charleston County, that's, that's true.
Okay, so I know we've had deficits in our early, the Head Start stuff, and maybe that's just coming from the deficit that we're having. All right, thank you very much.
That was Head Start, yes.
Just took one question, really, Chris covered the majority of it. Being in North Charleston, we have a population of 52% African-American and, and most concentrated area. I, I want to copy your PowerPoint as possible, so I can read it some more in my own time, but how do you feel the, the 4K program would be interjected in that area? I know you started talking about mainly Mary Ford, but in the other areas, going up the Dorchester Road Corridor or to the Ladson area, wherever you see that being interjected, more so in those concentrated areas?
I'm not sure 100% understand your question, however, all of, all of our schools in North Charleston, we have four-year, we have 115 four-year-old programs throughout Charleston County School District. So we have a number of four-year-old programs, and many of those are in all, they're in all of our elementary schools in North Charleston now. So, and, so tell me what your question was.
So, so then, you're saying we do have it spread out to North Charleston, which indicates.
Yes.
So then, what makes it so special then at Mary Ford, and why concentrated in that area then?
Well, one of the things that I think that this, Mary Ford is going to be a place where the entire school, the, the whole school is focused on the learners from toddlers, because of the Head Start will have toddlers, up through the end of kindergarten. So that zero to five, that's going to be the total concentration of that entire school. The cafeteria will be set for young children, the media center, all of the support services that would be put in place is for, it's all concentrated, the, everything, that's 100% focus on early childhood at that.
Zero to five?
Zero to five.
Okay, so then, I'm, I'm done. So then, that's what I'm saying, in the high-concentrated poverty area in North Charleston moving up, will you expand that from zero to five up the corridor, or that's just in one particular area?
I think there's plans that, that I understand from the board, is that they're looking at potentially two more early childhood centers, like Mary Ford down the road if the, in future building plans. Correct, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And this would, hopefully, this will be, this not hopefully, this will be the prototype to look to.
I got you. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, the next item up is the options for the academic calendar. Thank you very much, Ms. Jeffrey, for all the presenting. The options for the academic calendar for 2021, any board members have questions on that, or is there a motion on one of the four items?
Do we have a recommendation from the superintendent on which the administration would prefer?
No, ma'am, not at this time. Any of the four would be fine with us. It's fine to put them out for the public to opine.
Okay, so we're just moving.
Is that what we're moving to do? Is she putting them out for, Reverend Matt?
Yes, ma'am, and Meg Orchard has just moved to the table. She is, she is a half-time teacher and half-time support for the instructional coaches. So she helped develop the calendar, but the, all we're asking is that we put these four out for public comment, so that the public select the one that they prefer.
Okay, Mr. Freiter?
Just, there are some parents of students in the district that also have children in private school, so if we were able to find out what private school spring breaks were, it would be helpful to families. It would be nice to know that information.
Yes, let me give you a little bit of background about our process. I'm Meg Orchard, I'm the teacher on special assignment, so I'm part-time in the classroom and then part-time with Learning Services. You can see four options that we developed through the calendar. It started with a small committee of former Teachers of the Year from last year's roundtable group that sort of gave a first early draft to a couple versions of this calendar, knowing all of the legislative requirements, and then looking at past calendars as well. And then we pushed those calendar options to the teacher roundtable that is currently serving, and got feedback from both elementary, middle, and high school groups. We went back to the drawing table and made edits based on those recommendations from those teachers, and then we took it to the level leaders, who made a few shifts in some of our professional development dates. The biggest change there was looking at front-loading those at the beginning of the year, knowing some of our curriculum requirements that are on the horizon, new math textbook adoption, new social studies standards, and we wanted to reach the teaching corps in August before, obviously, they embarked on the year, rather than later on in February. So you see really a couple of options, A, B, C, and D is kind of where we eventually landed after taking into account all those groups. We did reach out to Berkeley County and Dorchester County to see if we could align our breaks along those, knowing that a large portion of, not only our teaching corps, but also our parents and families in Charleston County also touch upon Berkeley County particularly. We did not receive their dates. They had not fully confirmed their spring break particularly, which is where we were most interested in trying to align. And some of the private schools that we reached out to hadn't identified their calendar. We do ours much earlier in the year because we do a public voting. So I agree, we want to align, we want to make our stakeholders, whether they're parents or students, as happy as possible with the calendar options, but we had to proceed by kind of the calendar to make sure that we had a viable calendar option for the district.
Just along those lines, could you, between this meeting and when we vote on it, would you be able to follow up and see if you can find out?
Absolutely. I'm in contact particularly with the Berkeley County Calendar Committee, and they promised to keep me updated on, as soon as they had that. If you have a, a list of tangible private schools, I'm also absolutely willing to reach out to them further.
All right, any other questions on the calendar?
Yeah, just to.
Go ahead, Reverend Collins.
Are we normally closed for President's Day?
We have had that in a couple years past. Sometimes we try to schedule our professional development along those days. You'll notice that we do not have a February professional development, and so we're able to use the 12th as a weather makeup day, which of course, in the year, most recent years, we've had to use all of our makeup days. And then the 15th is, is a guaranteed day. The biggest desire around that from teaching feedback is that that stretch from January, when you return from holiday break to spring break, is a quite lengthy stretch. And so having President's Day is a nice, like, kind of regather.
So actually, school, school closed, President's Day?
Yes, sir.
And what, and, and Election Day?
Yeah, that was a big driving factor in the calendar this year. Because it's a presidential election, there's really two concerns. One, we want to obviously make it available for everyone to vote, and two, the safety of our students where voting precincts are is obviously a very high priority, and so that day is completely off the calendar, which really shifted really fall semester. It made it very challenging to fit as many days as possible in the fall semester, knowing really Election Day and also the Family Data Conference Day would both fall in the fall. And so you'll see that that sort of pushed our end date back into June, and that was the driving factor. Fall semester's really hard to fit.
So it makes you, so are we using the, Election Day, are we using our schools for precincts?
I believe, I, yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. If he's a minute, he's a precinct.
Whichever ones have been requested.
By, by Election Commission or?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Well, I missed.
We've asked them to try not to expand their footprint in our schools whenever possible, but the existing schools will remain, will remain voting centers.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Darby?
I move to approve posting the proposed options on the district website to receive public input.
Second. All right. If you will, are we voting on this, Julie?
Online.
Okay.
Go back. Am I, am I? Yeah.
All right, while the vote is tallied, the solicitation for interest is up next. Ms. Post, Dr. Postle waits.
Thank you. I neglected to introduce to the board Dr. Carolyn Belcher, who's here. She's our new Chief Academic Officer. She's right here, and Casey, you have not had an opportunity to meet her yet, and I wanted to mention that the vetting committee met last Wednesday. Robin Jones is our staff person who helps facilitate that process, and I believe that Ms. Jeffrey is going to give a report to the group on the vetting committee's recommendations.
So we reviewed the academic for urban school leadership, and everyone on the committee gave feedback. We had a rubric that we, we've had a very structured rubric that we went through with all of the applicants. The finalization of that is remove this applicant, I have the information, but it says, remove the applicant from further consideration because the majority of areas were not sufficiently addressed. College of Charleston is actually going to do the work that they, this particular organization said that they could do, so that we didn't need them. The next one was BES, and I don't know what BES.
Build, excel, sustain.
Or the Boston one?
Yes.
Yes. We said remove this applicant from further consideration because the majority of areas were not sufficiently addressed. And the third one was, okay, so I'll just address those two. We asked for partners to work with us to improve, you know, our schools, and we did not feel that either of those two organizations or ones we previously reviewed gave us evidence that they could do that. So the, the, the third one that we looked at was Orange Grove wanting to expand into Stono, and we, as a whole committee, we, we evaluated that, and the final consensus was remove this applicant from further consideration because the majority of the areas were not sufficiently addressed. Again, they were not addressing the needs that we felt that we had in our schools, so none of these three will be put forward to the board.
Okay.
And for those who don't know the makeup of the committee, we had teachers, community members, two board members. It was a really an amazing committee, and we had a lot of very good and rich discussion around all of these issues. And I have some recommendations that I'll bring back to the superintendent from that.
You've got a question from Reverend Collins?
You've got a question from Reverend Collins?
Yes, Dr. Poselwitz, the solicitation for interest, when these people apply, responses to the station, what are we looking for them to, what are we asking them to do, to provide us? The exact services that we're looking for, the impact to classroom, what are we really asking them to do and to give us?
I think there were probably a variety of responses that those who were interested in working with us could give. That was outlined in the original solicitation, Reverend Collins, and I don't have it in front of me today, but it ranged from the partnership with Engaging Creative Minds at Sanders Clive to enrich the arts, to the College of Charleston's teacher residency program, where they're going to help brand-new teachers get master's degree. We have a similar collaboration with the University of South Carolina that we're working with the sixth grade academy in the West Ashley area. The College of Charleston has also asked to partner with the district in developing a robust, rich, early childhood and family engagement program at Meminger. So those are some of the examples of the partnerships that fit very nicely with what we were doing. And then there were some other partnerships or proposals that were more like charter schools, and those are the ones that I think the committee said they didn't feel were appropriate right now. I didn't serve on the committee, I don't really know, but the solicitation would have, would have spelled out the specifics.
So if you, if you had a, if you could get what you want on a silver platter, exactly what you wanted from a company, what would you like that company to do in particular? If you had, if you had your wish on a silver platter, what would you like one company to do in a school or two for us?
Okay, so we could discuss that if you want to put it on the agenda. The solicitation was developed by board members, with input from board members, and was, was.
I understand you now, say you, what would you like, what would you like us to accomplish? What would you like, that's your goal.
What I would like to see is students who have been sitting in schools languishing for about 20 or more years without achievement significantly improving, have an opportunity to learn at higher levels. We have one example of that, where we've been able to make some significant differences, and I'd like to see that happen for all of our children in all of our schools, by whatever means.
Thank you.
We did not feel that the, that the organizations that applied had any proof that they could do that.
I'm with you on that.
And, and the other suggestion, general suggestion from the committee, and these are from people who work within the schools, is to go back into our schools and really look at what each school needs, because the needs will be different in each school, and see if as a district we can address those needs.
That's.
Ms. Coe?
Yes, so in one of our recent meetings, you had brought to us an idea that there were some organizations you thought should develop more intent, PIPs, and I can't remember what it stands for right now, but you, we, you suggested that some of these groups, we go back and ask them for some more in-depth information. University of Virginia, Darden School of Business, College of Charleston. But in our Friday update, you mentioned something called the Wallace Foundation, that's doing the same thing the University of Virginia, Darden's School of Business proposal is. So if we have entities doing this, I'm just wondering why we're continuing to get new entities to kind of double up on the same thing. That, the, you know, UVA proposal is strictly educator development, and according to you, the Wallace Foundation is educator development. So how many of these entities do we need to have coming into our district? Is, if we're wanting, I think where my thing is, is number one, that's a nightmare to manage, multiple contracts doing the same thing, because you'll get, we, how do you get the same results? And number two, why, why wouldn't we use the best option for everybody?
We actually, this is a conversation we had recently. We actually have four different approaches right now to creating a leadership pipeline. One is the regional approach through the Center for Educational Leadership that is, we're sharing among the four districts regionally. The second is the Wallace Foundation, and that came about as a result of a grant that I believe our local business community helped us acquire. Then the third is the proposal that came from the University of Virginia to work with, I believe, four, they would be working with, the proposal was for schools. They might, they might do more than four, but the proposal was for four schools. And theirs is an intensive school turnaround effort, training people to make a difference within three years in terms of student achievement efforts. And then we also have our own leadership development pipeline. So one of the primary responsibilities of Dr. Belcher is to pull together in a cohesive way what that entire, from classroom to boardroom, leadership pipeline would look like. Did you want to say anything more about that, Dr. Belcher?
Only that the Wallace Foundation is very much an assessment, a diagnostic of the current state of leadership support, recruitment selection, ongoing onboarding, professional development assessment. So it is less of a program, approach to actually intervening, and more of a where are we now? So that it has less of a competitive issue for you to think about.
Well, it's, okay, the Wallace Foundation's plan in Charleston is to develop a sustainable and intentional leadership pipeline, so that doesn't sound to me like an assessment of where we are now.
It's starting to help us develop a sustainable leadership pipeline by having access to their current state.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Collins? Go ahead, Ms. Collins.
No, for Ms. Priscilla, why not schools that are in critical needs be able to, or maybe Dr. Poselwitz, seek autonomy in themselves to operate their schools the way that they need to, to build their teams to breed success, instead of going through this vetting process, which you already determined that none of these were qualified to meet those standards?
Yes, so that is what we're doing. We're meeting with the principals of those schools now, and the principals are to be conferring with teachers to bring back to the board those, the areas of policy or regulation that they would like us to seek waivers. That we had hoped to have that ready in January. We don't, because there, we don't have enough input from principals yet, but Mr. Straderman is working with those principals, and we should have that, those requests ready for the board's consideration in February. But that's precisely the approach, to give the leaders of those schools greater autonomy.
Okay, so, and waivers then, I know you can't define or discuss that today because you don't know where, what waivers you'll be seeking, but you'll need, that's a lead way to discuss that further, right?
Right, we gave some examples in December. One example is the waiver from certain time restrictions for curriculum, so that if students need more time to learn, they could have more time. You're probably aware that under the uniform grading scale at the high school level now, the course selection and placement criteria have really tightened up. So if you decide you want to try Algebra II, and you get in it for about three weeks and realize that you're not quite ready for it, there's a punitive structure around getting you out of Algebra II. If you decide, if we decide that you might succeed in Algebra II, if we taught it 90 minutes a day across two semesters, that's a very difficult thing to do right now. So there might be some policy waivers around curriculum instruction. You might have seen a letter to the editor, there was a misunderstanding when we talked about teacher certification, and the example we gave was.
Got you.
In strings, somebody who's a concert violinist might be able to teach strings in our school without having to go back and take education courses first.
Got you.
Those were some of the examples that we gave.
Alright, thank you.
We, we absolutely were not thinking that any of our teachers would, would not have contracts or would not have benefits. That, we tried to make it clear that that's not what was contemplated in our principals' consideration of waivers.
Thank you, ma'am.
My only comment is that, you know, we went through a lot of effort coming up with this, whether it was, in looking at this and a focus on doing things, that we have as a district tried everything, the district itself has self-diagnosed over, at least my time on the board and for 12 years before. For example, I love College of Charleston, wonderful, I appreciate them doing West Ashley. We also partnership with one of these schools year, in 2005, 2006, when the state tried to take over one of our schools, and we're essentially the same place 14 years later. So I'm just cautious about self-diagnosing, self-addressing. I mean, these are schools where we've done everything we've been asked to do. I just, I hope we stay focused on it, yeah.
But Todd, I want to make sure that we're clear on this. From 2005 to today.
Right.
We've never asked for structural relief from the rules that other schools can operate under, that we're not allowed to. I think the, the more or less of the will of the vetting committee was when the principals and.
And I'm not second guessing the vetting committee.
Right, no, 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 not the vet, no, not the vetting committee, but the, the thing that's new today is that we have principals willing to say, this is, this is an onus on our district that the state put on us, and we'd like to have relief from that. We've never explored that. So I think it's valued, I don't know if we should take our foot off of any other options, but certainly add to the portfolio that if principals can apply for waivers to the State Department of Education, that's, that's a new thing that could be a game changer, that we've never tried before.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out. Ms. Jeffrey, does this come as a recommendation for approval of taking these things off, or no?
No.
Of the.
Information.
Alright, so moving on to the next item then, is mid-year goals update?
I'll wait for the information to find its way down the, down the row here. On the documents were in the board's, board docs, but I know it's difficult to keep changing documents while we're talking here, so we made hard copies. Again, the document that's on the top is the superintendent evaluation, general agreements that the board approved in 2018, 19. And I know that when you met last fall to complete my annual evaluation, many of you expressed frustration with that process. So I wanted to just start with this document and say, if, if the board wants to make changes for the coming school year, it would be a good time to think about what changes you wanted to make. And I wanted to call your attention to the last page of that document, which is, just spells out the evaluation timeline. The step one was for us to establish goals, and we did that, as you recall, last fall. Step two is the mid-year progress review, which is what we're going to discuss today. Step three is the year-end report and a summative evaluation, which is to occur in July. And then step four is that we will share with you, as they become available, the student achievement data. And of course, you set the three specific achievement goals you want us to focus on for this year. So I just, I wanted to start by pointing out, you know, what the timeline calls for and what the process looks like that the board approved. So the next page in your board docs or in the handout is just a progress report. Sometimes we focus so intently as we should on those areas where we're not meeting children's needs, that we don't stop to celebrate and recognize the accomplishments that our teachers and other staff members have made. So we wanted to take just a moment to talk about some of the accomplishments that rest squarely with teachers and principals. The online graduate, our on-time graduation rate keeps moving up, not as quickly as we would like it, and we have two schools where that is still a problem. One of the schools serves many children who come to, into our schools not speaking English well, but once they enroll in our schools, we are to graduate them within four years of the time they enroll. So that continues to be a challenge for us, but our, our on-time graduation rate is increasing. Our scores that are nationally normed are above the national average, and that is a really great thing. Our SE Ready scores are higher than they have been since those tests were re-normed four or five years ago. We had an increase in the number of students who are national merit finalists and semifinalists, with the junior scholars at an all-time high, and we had the highest ever SAT scores, with more students taking the SAT. So the problem, the challenge for us, is that that kind of success is not equitably distributed. Some of our students are experiencing tremendous success. We're moving more children and more diverse students into that group of children who are experiencing success, but we're not closing the gap as rapidly as we would like. But I, I did want to point out some of these indices that are directly attributable to the work that principals and teachers do, let alone students and parents. Our advanced placement pass rate is higher than it's ever been, and we have more students taking advanced placement courses. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these accomplishments. I just want to mention that while we focus on the areas of need, a great deal of hard work is occurring. The 15 schools that we had that were targeted by the state last year greatly improved this year. We just had three schools targeted by the state. Now we have a number who sit right there on the edge, and we'll have to watch them every single year to make sure that we keep moving ahead. Now half of the accreditation score, the accountability score, is based on the rapidity with which we're growing students. And the way this works in the, in the South Carolina accountability system, you have to grow your students at a faster rate than all the other schools in the state. So it's, it's, it's an idiosyncratic sort of measure. It's not just how quickly you grow your students, you have to outrun everybody else. So it's, it, that changes every year. So, and it's a difficult measure for our schools. If we were in the Indianapolis 500, and you ran your record-breaking pace this year, next year, in order to stay out of accountability trouble, you have to run a faster pace. You have to beat your time of the previous year. So you have to keep improving the improvement. That's not a bad thing. We're not yet at the point where we have all of our children growing one year per year. That's where we want to be. There's no district in the country that has all children grow one year per year. But we want to be up more toward the 70th to 75th percentile on that, if we can move in that direction. So one of the things I want to mention is about the tremendous effort of our chief financial officers over time, and the discipline of the board, moving us from where we were four years ago. We were, we were in serious financial difficulty to today, where we have a budget surplus that we'll be able to use to offset some of the mission-critical work that we want to do, and to offset the, the funding cliff that we're going to face in three years if we don't have a little bit of relief from Act 388. I'm going to pause there to see if there were any comments or questions about just that overview of some of the, some of the accomplishments that should be attributed directly to the staff members who are sitting here and to teachers and principals.
Questions, comments, Ms. Freiger?
First, congratulations to everybody on the team, because it is a team effort. So I want to applaud that. Doing better than we've done is good, and I guess I would just ask that maybe if we had aspirational districts that have similar, to the extent there are districts that have similar makeup, how do we do against places we want to emulate, if you will? It'd be good to have some aspirational communities that we could look at to say, wow, if we were really successful, we'd be doing as well as X, Y, Z. And I don't know where that is, but it would be helpful to me to understand that. I'm glad to see the growth and the progress, but it'd be nice to know where, where we think we could get to.
Right, we, we watch that. We haven't presented that to the board, but we watch. It's difficult for us to do that nationally because of the tests that our state uses, but we've watched districts like us in terms of the size of the district, and districts like us in terms of the, of the demographics. So if you look at this slide, the top right-hand corner there, we had more students rated college-ready, because we're getting a whole lot more students into dual credit, and, and scoring higher on the college-ready mark than any other district in the Low Country, and in, than any other large school district in the state. So we try to compare ourselves with the large school districts in the state. There are about five of them, and we watch ourselves on maybe 10 indicators. Our goal is to be the top of those districts that are like us. But the next time we give the information to the board, we'll include that so you can see how we watch our own comparators.
To the extent possible, since South Carolina isn't always at the top of national rankings, it'd be good to find some national comparators.
That's, we, so, that's absolutely right. So when we look at those districts, we look at, at those who use MAP, at the ACT, the SAT, the cost per student, the number of administrators per student, all those sorts of things that say, where are we with our own comparators? Where would we be?
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions on?
On this piece?
I guess I just have a comment, and I'm happy to see all these things.
I guess I just have a comment, and I'm happy to see all these things, and thank you. But also to remember that we have, it's an average, and so never to forget, and I know you won't, the children who aren't in the.
That's, that's right.
Who are at the top of these statistics.
And that's what we normally spend our time talking about. So the only reason I mention them today is we failed to pause to celebrate.
Right.
All of the successes, and that is debilitating for the folks who are out there in the field.
But this is great, and it's a good trajectory to be on.
Okay, and so for the mid-year, we took those 10 goals and really tried not to give you 40 pages, but to just say, as we look at this next section here, where are we on the, on the mid-year dashboard or the stoplight chart? We started with stating the explicit and measurable goals. You know, we have done that. We have that down to a fine point. We worked to make sure all of our personnel understood the expectations. The third goal, directing all human and physical resources toward priority goals, we marked as progressing, but not on track. You heard today the report from the early childhood program evaluation. We would like to get clearer about the program effectiveness before we bring the next piece of the budget to you. So we're a little bit behind on that because of all the other work that we did last fall. But as we bring the budget, Mr. Kennedy and others are working really hard to make sure that we do a better job of aligning. Here's how well we think a program did, and this is why we recommend either investing in it again for next year or not investing in it. So we gave ourselves a cautionary light there because we think we have more work to do. Number four, revising our magnet and partial magnet programs. We have spent a lot of the fall doing that. That is on track, and you will see all of the three pages there of detail about what it took to do that. We get to the next goal then, improving preschool and family engagement programs. We are on track with that. The next goal is the acceleration schools. While we didn't follow through with any of the specific solicitations for interest in the way that the board might have originally envisioned, we do have, we think, some good partnerships that are emerging from that, some better metrics around it. And then if we look correctly at these waivers, the trade-off has to be greater autonomy for greater accountability. So those are the pieces we have to work on as we move forward, but we're on track to do that. The seventh goal, creating optimal school size. We are on track with where the board asked us to be. You have a report due to you in February with some recommendations around that, and that frankly is a place where the board is going to have to decide how the board majority feels about this. Because it's clear to us that the board is divided, and it makes it difficult for us as an administration to know what to do when, when the board is not in unison around this. So it's a conversation the board needs to have. If we're going to try to keep open some very small schools, we're going to have to come to terms with the fact we cannot get all the programming to the children in those schools that we get to children in schools where we have 500 or more kids. The next goal, developing talent. We marked ourselves a little behind in because we haven't, you heard Mrs. Coe's question earlier today, we can't really talk to you about the specificity of that talent pipeline that you asked us about. We still have some work to do there. We hope to have that done by February, but it's not exactly where we hoped it would be in January, so we marked it as a caution. Number nine, revamp the gifted program is well underway. And then number 10, the new master plan for the proposal of the 2020 referendum is on track and will be coming to you soon. So that's the mid-year goals report. If you have any concerns, I hope you'll let me know now so that we can make some course corrections and not be at a place in July learning that we wish we had done something differently in January. Thank you.
All right, the next item up is an update from Allegro Charter. I see, Ms. Nicker, if you'll please come forward.
So what's the mechanism for providing feedback on what we just went through?
I think probably the best thing to do would be just to let me know that you would like a one-on-one, and we just sit down and do that, or if two or three board members want to meet together and give me feedback.
The board is a body, isn't going to give you cohesive direction on this.
That would be preferable if.
That work if we'd made this an action item?
All right, then you, we don't have a mechanism for.
Well, she said, give us, give us, let me know if there's things you want to change, and then there's no mechanism for the board to do that.
We don't have a.
While we have a superintendent who says it's difficult to move forward with a divided board, I would think board votes would be the best way to codify actions coming.
Could, could. I think an informal conversation would be really helpful.
It could, based on that feedback, could we bring back maybe either to our next committee of the whole or between now and the next committee of the whole, some, a mechanism for doing that as a board? Would that be okay?
I would love it if we could do that.
Okay, so Cindy, can we?
Talk about.
Get back to me and I'll get back to you.
Okay.
All right. All right, Mr. Nicker, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Good afternoon, members of the board and Dr. Postoway. Allegro Charter School is excited to update the board with some future plans for our facilities location. As you may know, we've been located downtown Charleston, adjoining the Cathedral of St. John the Baptist for the five years we've been open since we were unanimously approved by the Charleston Board. We were hoping to be able to find several different building locations in the past five years. As I was telling you in a meeting earlier, our building search has been going on for five and a half years now. We've had several plans that the close-to-close fall apart, and we have a wonderful partner in Metanoia now that we are looking to revitalize the former Chikora Elementary School that is currently owned by the City of North Charleston. It'll be a multi-use building with a Metanoia-run early childhood program in it, a cultural arts component surrounding the auditorium in the school that the City of North Charleston Cultural Arts Department will be running, and then the primary tenant will be Allegro, located on three different floors of the school. We've met with both DOT and the Office of School Facilities, gotten their preliminary approval to be moving ahead on this plan. We have our finances underway and established to be able to make this move here. We are looking to continue to have our diverse student population that doesn't have a majority of students from any one area of the district or any one demographic of the district. We're currently under 50%, but over 40% of both African-American and Caucasian students, and we look to continue that. This will be a closer location with better transit options as far as road access and networks and the future Low Country Transit Line coming to us from our current location, and will allow our school to grow to the 350-student capacity that we have. Our current location is very inadequate for our students. It lacks science labs to teach our high-level courses. It lacks the ability to have working water and electricity sometimes when things downtown go a little bit sideways. We are really looking forward to being in a new renovated building with good space, and after many years are very hopeful to have this partner in this future building in front of us.
All right.
Congratulations.
Questions? Is that the end of your presentation?
That's what I've got.
All right, just going around.
When's the anticipated occupancy?
The construction firm says 12 months from the time we're able to finish documents, we'll be able to open. So we are really hoping for January of 2021. However, I'm also making sure that we're realistic, so we have our lease extension in place through July of 2021.
You're looking at August 2021 in almost every scenario, best case and worst case, every case. That's perfect.
Correct.
Ms. Frey? Ms. Green?
No.
Ms. Jeffrey? Ms. Darby?
No.
Collins? Mr. Hollins here? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
The next item up is the Audit and Finance Committee update.
Can we have a break?
Yeah, if you want to, we can take five minutes. It is 2:17. We'll be back at 2:25. We will adjourn. The first item up is the early head start funding application. Is there, are there any questions on that?
How was the first item was a review of the audit finance.
That was the only action item coming out of the.
There was a number of rather large things on that agenda. Can we get an update on some of them?
Yes, going down first with early head start funding application. This is, we're not, until next year, we won't do a full relook at how we apply and what we're applying for. This is a one-year tweak for asking for 4K funding for certified teachers in the Mary Ford program.
When does that, when does our current head start rank?
Next year.
2021?
Correct, yep. What other questions?
So what's the, what's the, what was the committee's decision about putting together, bringing in a firm to do an audit of the 1722 capital tax program?
We did not, oh, we, yes, we, they were going out to, and Mr. Kennedy, correct me if I'm wrong, because there were two items like this. One is going out to either Elliot Davis or our incumbent.
So with the refund procedures here for the capital program, that is with the firm of Elliot Davis. This was information for the Audit and Finance Committee. We will bring a recommendation back next month for the.
Okay.
What's the next item?
Our next item was a transportation report, the capital projects report, and then the monthly financial report. You know, we're not significantly off target for our finances at this point in the year.
What about the bid thing you discussed in executive session? Can we get an update on that at some time? Because I know we're reading a lot about it in the paper, and we don't know what's going on.
Yes, and it was, we, just without saying anything, that, it was briefly disclosed in executive session. In public session, we discussed the process that got us to here. That, in particular, our operations and procurement director briefed us on the process, you know, from start to now.
So where are we in the process from start to now? Have we awarded a bid?
Yeah, there was a, I think technically, yes, that a.
I'm asking if the district awarded a bid.
It's not, the superintendent has not signed it. There was a, there was a.
An award made.
An award made. It was.
Mr. Kennedy?
All right, just getting advice not to get too into the weeds of this, but nothing has been signed by the superintendent with respect to a contract.
Has anything been discussed with the board in respect to a contract?
No.
The board doesn't really get involved.
Yeah, because, yeah, essentially, all right.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Quick question. I know it's not on the agenda, but did we retain a lobbyist, you know of?
And.
Did the board retain a lobbyist?
No.
I don't.
A district?
Other than.
Don't, I'm not sure, I'm not sure. No, no, okay.
Are they clear? Normally it does a work.
Okay.
Did the board officers request that the superintendent look into retaining another lobbyist?
There have been, there.
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, I can follow up right after this on that, so. I don't think it would be a bad idea, given particularly this last year with respect to our relations with the delegation.
The agenda would allow the rest of the board to have some of these conversations.
Yeah, understood. Okay, the next, are there any further questions on audit finance? Okay, then the next item up is policy and personnel, and I completely ignored Ms. Jeffrey inadvertently, so I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Green for policy and personnel.
You can ignore me too, if you.
That's easier.
This, the magnet school wording, if you remember at the last meeting, we had some concern about the wording, the changes that we wanted to make, and so we asked Ms. Hamm if she would follow up with the appropriate people and come back to us today on the suggested wording for what we were trying to do. And you see it in your, you see it, the red part in the proposed policy.
Ms. Green, is the red part the difference between first reading and what's going to be coming to us for second reading?
This is, this is second reading, right? This would be.
Right, but it says these have modifications from the December meeting. Are the red things the modifications from the December meeting?
Yes.
More specifically, the first red thing on the first page is exactly the same, the changes in the second area.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, ma'am. I'm a little bit confused. Going down to the third to the last paragraph on the first page, and then going to the second page, to the top of the second page, when it says the, if there are more qualified applicants that, that positions available, then a random lottery must be used to select those students admitted. So this one talks about the lottery being used. And then they go. Right here to the bottom.
All right, the third.
The third from the bottom, third from the bottom.
Paragraph from the bottom.
And the last sentence in that paragraph. Then the next page is talking about additionally, seats are available at county-wide academic and maintenance schools. Up to 30% shall first be offered to students who meet interest criteria, are also zoned for a school located in Charleston County that has a poverty index of 80% or higher. So the two, the two would conflict with each other. These two concepts. In other words, if we could do the 30% spacing for students, then, but in this one, we're doing a random lottery. One would conflict with the other, so we have to do, I think, one or the other, I think, is what we have to do, or somehow fix it. Now, we don't have a lottery for one set of kids, and then we're having the 30% for another set of kids, and the lottery kids get in first, and the 30% don't get in. But the 30% get in, the lottery don't get in. So it seems like the lottery kids would get in first based on this seem like, the way it's written, that is. So I think it needs a little bit of work before it gets approved.
Do you know which paragraph he's talking about, Natalie?
Third from the bottom, last sentence, and then the top of the second page.
Yes, sir. I see what, I see what, I see where you are.
The random lottery.
I don't think I understand the conflict.
Okay, see right here, when you see that sentence, it says, the district will open a time period for accepting applicants, not less than two weeks. If there are more qualified applicants than positions available, then a random lottery must be used to select those students admitted. Then you go to the next page. Additionally, seats are available at county-wide academic and maintenance schools. Up to 30% should first be offered. Students admit interest criteria and have, they're zoned for schools in Charleston County 80% poverty. So what I'm saying is, one or the other's going to fail. I don't think you're going to have the lottery students apply, and then another group of kids apply also to get in. The seating is limited already. So it's either going to be a lottery, they all use the lottery, or you have to use this part on the second page that the 30% offered to the kids in Charleston County with an 80% higher, 80% or higher poverty index, which adds a lot of kids.
Right. The lottery is applying only to those that live outside.
It doesn't say that.
No, it's a.
Well, this is what I'm reading. The random lottery may be applied to only those who reside outside the constituent district.
So I would say that that entire paragraph is confusing, given that we don't have any magnet schools that serve students residing in a constituent district and residing out of a constituent district. So we might need to clean up the whole thing. No, that's, that has no constituent district.
Well, this policy is, remember, the current policy, and we were only dealing with the changes to the magnet. Is that right? So as a result of some of the things that we've done, if there are some changes that need to be made. But, go ahead, Natalie, I'm sorry. So I think I want to try and address Reverend Collins's issue. It's, so Reverend Collins, this, this, the part on the second page that indicates that if, that 30% of the seats are academic magnet, academically magnet, academically inclined magnet schools are first offered to those students who are zoned for a school that has a poverty index of 80% or higher, the rest of those seats are classified via lottery rank order. So you get a score. I think that these two provisions work together, is what I think I'm trying to say. I don't think that they're contradictory at all.
I understand that that's your goal, but I think they're wording, Mr. conflict, because which student, which students are going to apply for the lottery? And which students apply for the 30%, it might be the same students. Which one, which one's taking priority?
It is the same students. And for instance, if there were more than.
And for instance, if there were, uh, more than, more students that applied that qualified for those 30% seats, then they will be subjected to a lottery as well.
So, so which students then would take priority to get in? The ones that go to the random additional seats or the ones 30% or higher, uh, poverty? Or we're setting aside 30%? We're setting aside 30% seats?
Right, so this isn't a prioritization in, in the policy.
So that's what I'm saying. Yes, I understand that, but it's not really saying that in writing.
That's what I read.
Yeah, I mean, I, but I do understand that's our intent. And that's, and that's not a bad idea to have 30%, 30% of the seats saved. But the lottery kids, we have to address what are we, what are we going to mean? Who, who calls, who goes to the lottery then otherwise?
Right here, 30% shall first be offered. Right.
Another one, the previous page. Who then goes to the lottery?
Well, that, all right, this one here does say.
I'm straight on that one.
Okay, so on this one, it just, it says, if there are more qualified applicants, then, so that means kids that have met rubrics or whatever, then positions available, then a random lottery must be used to, uh, select those students admitted. So that's after you're doing this.
Well, see, that, that's what I'm trying to clear up. I was saying, after we go through the 30%, then we do a lottery or.
But this says shall, this says up to 30% shall first be offered. That says first.
But the other, but the other paragraph says, uh, if, if they are more qualified, this comes first now in the policy. This comes first in the policy. If they're additional seats, then it'd be a lottery. Then the next page is when we had the 30%. So anyway, but I'm done that. I think it's confusing myself, but I don't want to make a big stink out of it.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Green, I've moved to approve the second reading as written.
Second.
All in favor?
She didn't get a vote.
Okay.
I think it just, I, I voted against it, but I think it just needs to get cleaned up. It's confusing.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
It's confusing to parents.
That's all I'm going to say, is a little bit clearer.
If you have some suggestions of how you think it needs to be clear of you and Cindy, if y'all would let Natalie know, that would be helpful.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay. The naming of facilities is really not mine. I mean, that didn't.
It's Eric.
Yeah, Eric. I mean, that didn't really come to me, so.
Okay, well, that, uh, item was up for a vote. You can see the process that was gone through and Dale Arthur Brown Media Center is what is proposed. Is there a?
I move to approve the committee's recommendation.
Second.
All right, if you'll cast your vote. As the votes are tallied, the next item up is the appointment of committee liaisons. I've asked Mrs. Joyce Green and Ms. Priscilla Jeffrey to continue as the policy and.
Ms. Coats, charge, just one second.
Uh, excuse me.
Ms. Coats, can you please cast your vote?
Sorry. Parliamentary was misbehaving.
Okay, I move that, uh, Ms. Joyce be appointed as the Policy and Personnel Committee and Ms. Priscilla Jeffrey be appointed as head of the Strategic Education Committee for the next.
Second.
Second.
Is this one here's policy? We're voting for it?
It was both, policy and SEC.
Uh, yes, it's policy and SEC.
It's policy and SEC.
We had to say SEC on mine, okay. Mine just says policy.
Yes.
You said SEC?
No, coming back up.
Yeah, this says policy only.
The motion's about, it'll pop up. Julie's got to say it. There you go. Priscilla Jeffrey for SEC and Joyce Green for Policy and Personnel. Short, shorthand.
I got you.
Do you have a recommendation for Miss Nick?
Yes, you shouldn't preside over your appointment of you, right?
Right.
Green, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're going to do it?
Yep.
Uh, so, next up, we have the, um, Audit and Finance recommendation. And, uh, make a motion or recommend to serve an Audit and Finance Committee, Todd Garrett and Joyce Green.
Second.
All right, the next item up is public comments. Uh, we had one name on public comments. Is that individual still going to be speaking? Mr. Mark Pepper?
Dwayne, I discussed that. We can take that off the agenda, Dwayne, if that's how you prefer it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. The next item up are the upcoming meetings, uh, which will be.
27.
January 27th and February 10th, the next committee of the whole, if there's no other.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you.